...be an expansion of their parking lot. You've got a facility expecting 15 employees and you have more than 100, you have some different parking needs, and so I think they have a plan to expand that parking lot.
Boy, do you know how to answer a question correctly.
Otherwise, this is pretty much exactly what we talked about in an earlier meeting, correct? We just changed some numbers.
Right. Their wages aren't going to change, it's just the pay.
I understand.
Did we already have a motion?
No.
I make a motion to a per.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion?
I think this is a great program that helps the company as well as the city and helps us both grow.
Roll call.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
When do you want this? Just mail it back to you or?
Uh, the company has not reviewed the agreement yet, so.
Okay.
Until you sign off on it, I want to make sure they're.
Okay, alright. Thanks. Item number five is to consider a resolution waiving the preliminary plat and approving the final plat for the middle school subdivision.
So move.
Support.
Motionless support. Any discussion?
I did attend, of course Kelly was there, but I did attend that planning and zoning meeting and they didn't seem to have any reservations or problems with this. Would you agree, Kelly?
Right.
Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number six is consider resolution authorizing Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission to apply for a SAFER Routs to School Grant on behalf of the city of West Burlington. This grant would pay for a sidewalk over on Pennington Street from Prairie to West Burlington Avenue. And they'd have to build a retaining wall and to do the, some of the matching money, we would use $5,000 of money that we budgeted for building sidewalks, which we haven't spent any at all this year yet.
Mayor, can you tell me, I don't know where that retaining wall would be.
Oh, it'd be on that property, um, in the corner of West Burlington Avenue and Pennington, on the north side.
There's a hill there now and no sidewalks, so that.
The sidewalk had followed a contour of that hill.
That's right.
The hill's so steep that there's no way we could put a sidewalk in there and not have the whole hill come down on it. So, and it would be to an advantage to the property owner because that hillside's so hard to mow anyway. Where if we, if we put the retaining wall in so we can put our sidewalk in, then they don't have to try to keep the grass growing and try to mow the hillside or trim it or however they take care of it. But there is a lot of children in that part of town that have, it's actually pretty scary if you go over there in the morning and watch them walking down the street. There's two hills they have to go up and it's, it's very hard to see those, those kids, especially if they're in the middle of the street when you come over the top of the hill.
There's issues on the other side. There's like a drainage way and the other side didn't work as well. There still have to be a retaining wall because, but there's other issues on the other side.
The original plan took that, it took it into the apartment's parking lot.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And after we had our meeting and discussed it, we thought that we, we do have sidewalks on Prairie and Cottage Grove and to serve that neighborhood, it would be better if we put it on the north side so that everybody in that part of town has a sidewalk to get to West Burlington Avenue.
So the people in the apartment, all they gotta do is walk across the street once, get on that sidewalk and then they're good to go.
Right.
Okay. Okay. The $5,000, is that, that's this budget year that we're in right now?
I'm not sure when, I'm not sure when this money comes. I would guess.
My guess it would be next year.
I would guess too because federal money usually takes a little while.
And then my question about that, is that like all that we put in the budget for sidewalks?
No, we put 10 in.
Okay, so we'd still have some left to do.
Right.
Some sidewalks, okay. Alright, that's all I care.
We got 10 in for this year and if this doesn't come till next year, then I think we put 10 in for the next year.
Okay, alright. I just couldn't remember what numbers we used.
There it is.
I just hated to see us use all of our sidewalk money there because you'd, I know, Mayor, you'd already mentioned we need to do sidewalks at some point in time up here on these new lots. Uh, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah, they didn't tear them out yet, but.
Oh, they did.
Did they tear them out?
Yeah, they.
Most of it's gone.
Yeah, they didn't do the approaches going down to the street, but I asked Randy if they could take them out and they didn't charge us anything for it, they just went ahead and took them out while they were there and.
Well, I think whoever develops ought to be paying for the sidewalk.
Okay, well, I thought one time you had mentioned that we ought to make sure.
Yeah, because the sidewalk.
Whoever does it shouldn't do it till after all the houses are built.
Well, absolutely, okay. I just wanted to make sure we wasn't expending our whole sidewalk budget on that one project. That's all I care.
So then when we get these kids to West Burlington Avenue, then are they gonna go up the sidewalk on West Burlington Avenue on the east side and then head up Van Lee's?
I would like to, Dan and I have talked about that a little bit. I personally would like to see us put a stop sign in at Pennington and get them across there.
See, there's awful lot of traffic. You can sit there for a long time as GE traffic.
Right.
Back and forth.
We have a sidewalk from Pennington that goes all the way to Ramsey Street to get the kids to the schools. I mean, that would be, that would, it's something Frank would have to look at, but, but at least we, we do have some options on how to get them, get them over there all the way on sidewalks.
If we did decide to do that, would it be a good idea to put that stop sign up way ahead of time to start getting folks used to stopping there before kids are in the crosswalks?
Yeah, I think so, and there's, you can put flags on the stop signs to get people's attention and, I mean, it, it takes a while.
Flashing.
Over the years, we've put up a lot of different stop signs and I'm as guilty as anybody of running some of them that I put up myself just because it's, I'm not used to them being there.
You know, the chief's sitting right here.
This being recorded.
Yeah. If we put up stop signs there, I think we ought to put the flashing ones.
Flashing ones.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's not set in stone, that's just something we talked about that.
Well, we need to get them across the street somewhere.
Yeah, I agree.
So they can walk down Houston Street. Sorry.
Yeah, you can take them back.
I mean, you know, you all know what happens as well as I do. But we need to provide the access. I, I agree. I totally agree that we need to provide them safe sidewalks. Getting them to actually use them is another whole problem.
Actually, I want to make a note to call Zach, because we may be able to put a couple, those flashing stop signs might be part of the grant if we put that crossing in at the same time. We might be able to get the money to pay for them too.
Those are, what, a couple of thousand each?
Seventeen hundred, I think they were last time we bought them.
Yep. You'd need, what, three?
Anyone want to make a motion?
So move.
Support.
Motionless support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seven is to consider applying for STP funds for proposed 2018 Mount Pleasant Street resurfacing project. This would be a project that would probably run all the way from Mount Pleasant and Roosevelt to.
To GEAR.
To GEAR.
That's what we're looking at. We've met with them today. It's, we're doing, trying to get the maximum amount of points by working with Burlington. And doing a cooperative project always with another jurisdiction always helps that. We're looking at, right now, we're looking at doing a, a, a three-lane center turning lane, perhaps with, I know you had people out here with complete streets. We're tossing around the idea maybe doing a bike lane on the outsides of that because we'd have room if we do that, but, but we're still putting that application together, so that's up in the air. But Randy and I have talked about the three-lane thing. It looks like with the way our traffic counts are, that that would work. The other thing we can talk about later, but.
And what if we, and what if some of us don't like the three-lane thing?
That's not set in stone.
Good.
Um, but.
And so, any idea what our 20% would be at that time?
I don't, I don't have those, Steve had those numbers and he didn't give those to me, so I can get those. That's, we're just, we're just doing, filling out the application at this point. It goes to regional planning, they decide whether you score high enough to get it, and then we're still looking at 2018.
I know.
I mean.
Five years down the road.
You're, you're a long time from.
Making decisions. I've seen some dissatisfaction when I watched Burlington City Council meeting Monday night, some dissatisfaction amongst some of their folks that they weren't talking about resurfacing Mount Pleasant Street until 2018.
But if you're gonna use the federal money.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I mean, that considerably saves us a lot of money doing it that way.
80% of the cost.
Is this something though, that we had the plans in place and some shovel-ready money came along?
It's in our five-year street plan.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one of the first streets we resurfaced on in our street projects.
It's ranked up on our, our street plan.
Look, can you think of a single reason not to do this?
No.
Motion.
We're trying.
Support.
Motionless support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Here.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion approved is presented.
Support.
Motionless support to approve consent agenda items one through eight, which are in the minutes of regular city council meeting on February 20th, 2013. Payment to Claude City Analytical, payment Mississippi Valley Pump, payment to Center State International, payment to Magnificent Events, approve the taxi permit renewal for Yellow Cab Company, and approve the Clerk's monthly financial report for January 2013, and approve the claims list as presented in the amount of $150,968.82. That breaks down to the general fund of $64,753.96. Road use tax, $5,951.68. Tax increment financing, $2,003.87. Alamoia set aside, $34,353. Equipment replacement water, $254.44. Equipment replacement administration, $254.43. And equipment replacement sewer, $254.43. Water, $12,047.86. Sewer, $24,849.93. Risk management self-insurance, $2,832.52. Flex account, $1,862.70. And the Fourth of July celebration, $1,550. Any discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Motion carried. Mayor reports, finance, Roger.
I don't think I have anything new. Obviously, we got a lot of finance things on the agenda this evening, but I don't have anything new.
I have anything for finance. Streets.
Uh, Randy will probably have, but nice job on the streets and everything.
Thanks.
And when I drive around and tell the guys they did a good job and you can go ahead and.
At the next council meeting, I'll have, have a memo on getting the cameras and the work done at the intersection of agency and gear to put the cameras up there. I just got a, got a fax just a few minutes ago at the shop. It's, I haven't had time to put all the numbers together, but we should be real close on what we, we had budgeted and talked about before, so we're still moving on that. We're gonna start patching, doing a little patching tomorrow and probably Friday on the streets, trying to get the worst potholes. And I know people are starting to be a little discouraged with their alleys, but it's gotta dry up, and as soon as it does, we'll take care of those, so that's all I have.
Anything else for streets?
What about the lights out here at the mall? Those flashing red ones?
Not sure why that happened. It happened during one of the snowstorms and Dick Palmer was out of town. And I talked to Dick over the weekend, he's back in town, and I told him to wait till it gets a little bit nicer and I'll have him take a look at it. I have a bad feeling that we probably have a broken loop out there with the asphalt. Don't know for sure, but sometimes I think it works better when they're flashing than when they're actually cycling, so. But I have talked to Dick and hopefully next week we'll start taking a look at that.
Okay.
Public safety, Trace.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything to report.
Wow. Whoa. Mike, you got anything to report?
Must be nice. Uh, Klein Center, the final federal inspection is set up for Friday, the eighth. I've been working off and on throughout the last couple of weeks to get the city side of it completed. The mayor accompanied me one day out there and we looked at rooms and everything else that we needed to look at and, and our well-finish-up Friday, hopefully I can give them an occupancy license at that point. Tender top exterior siding's being installed and they're doing the prep work for the brick work out there. Deary Brothers HVAC, interior walls, electrical and plumbing, and fire protection is being installed in the showroom area. And the final interior floor concrete portion was poured last Friday. Ortho and rehab offices, treatment areas, the work continues in there, they're putting walls up, they're framing. HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and fire protections being installed in that. The middle corridor, the atrium area is still a wind tunnel, very cold, and they're not doing much in that until the weather changes. We're also doing liquor license inspections and ordinance violations are starting to increase. On the fire side, we did receive three portable radios from Vertex based on our complaints with them and three microphones. We in return sent three bad radios in and three microphones. Happy to report that the three radios that have been issued have had great success so far, and I'm now working with Vertex to replace all of our portables to the new technology that they sent us, and then we're gonna start off on the mobile radios with the issues with them. Explorer Post, their first fundraiser's March 13th at Mazzio's over the dinner hour. Looking to draw some money on helping the explorers keep moving forward. The association's working on the Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast already, they're taking donations and getting things lined up as far as the needs they have for that particular day and meal. Under the SAFER Grant, we've got five new hires in place. Their certification testing has started. We have four new ones in the hiring process. They have cleared the background checks, which will, if we get those four on with monies available on the 2011 SAFER, will take us to 35 members. And from what I gathered and what I've talked to the people, the fire department maximum has only been 38. And I think we can top the 41, which is our allotted number through next year. We'll probably lose a few, but I think we can, I think, my goal is to max it out, and we're well on our way with nine new people this year. Last thing I got was Congressman Dave Lozak called me this afternoon and told me that we were awarded the 2012 SAFER Grant. His thing was that we lost $30,000 in it, and I think it's probably from the sequester. The grant was for $110,000 for four years, and we got $80,015 for four years. There's no pay involved for any of the members. This is the SAFER Grant that the city administrator and the mayor had gone through and edited before we submitted it, and it basically covers the training room, the HVAC the first year, some new computers and software, it helps the Explorer Post, it deals with training, the specialty classes for officer development, truck company, RIT team, and hazmat, and it also gives us some office supply equipment upgrades. And again, there's no cost to the city. And the second portion of the grant was for the inspector, the 40-hour-a-week inspector, which was denied by FEMA. And according to Lozak's office, they said that because of the full-time hiring from the big cities, it took two to eight million dollars at a whack, there was no funding for it. They ran out of funding because they were trying to keep the full-time firefighters either hired or new hirees or whatever for other bigger departments, so there was just not enough money in the coffer for it, so the smaller departments lost out on their, their funding. But that's all I have. I will put the press release in your boxes tomorrow, I just got it from Jared this afternoon late, and I'll run copies and throw it in your box so you at least you'll have the, the press release from him, so.
Mike, is the four gentlemen, are they local or?
Yeah, they're local.
Okay.
They're just in different phases. A couple of them have to go get physicals, the other two, they have to go through their testing process and that kind of thing.
In the living area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. One of them was a firefighter here not too long ago that resigned right after I came, but now wants to come back, so.
Good.
So, he was good help and we'll take him with open arms.
That $80,000 grant, it sounds like that's basically money we don't have to spend out of the city budget.
Right.
HVAC.
HVAC was the big one we put in for, and we put 10 grand in for it the first year based on, a year and a half ago, I had 6,000 in for the HVAC for that room, and they laughed at me when I got the bids. So we upped it to 10 grand and hopefully that will cover it 100%.
So you dropped from 123 down to 80 now?
Do what?
Next year, you drop from 123 to 80?
110.
It's, we asked for 110 over four years, and they came out with 80,150 for four years.
So we lost 30 grand.
Alright.
But at least, at least we're 80, 80 grand to the plus at no cost to the taxpayers.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no payroll, there's no fees to it. It's all for the, basically the station and the guys and women that serve us and those kind of things. It's more recruitment, it's more retention than it is recruitment.
Thanks, Mike.
If I have anything for.
Just a couple of quick things. First of all, congratulations on that, Mike, that sounds like a pretty good deal. Second of all, the, the Explorer Post.
Mm-hmm.
Should we be looking at them being able to maybe do some other kind of a fundraiser at the Fourth of July other than the Pancake Breakfast, that that separate group could maybe do something else to?
Sure.
Since I hear you're talking about having a fundraiser for them.
Right, right. Oh, absolutely. They have to do a couple fundraisers a year anyway.
Okay.
And right now, they're not being supported by our budget at all until July.
Okay.
And so they're, they're wanting to get some more funds in, so.
Well, we, as we move forward, we need to talk about that maybe and think about if there is something else they could do during the Fourth of July.
And out of this new SAFER Grant, they're gonna get funding for their post too on top of that.
Yeah.
With the, but yes, absolutely, they have to do a couple a year anyway.
Okay, thanks. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Tullis, yeah?
I don't have anything, Randy.
The only thing I have is tomorrow, I'll be meeting with Dave Stockwasser from Snyder, the architect, the electrical engineer and mechanical engineer, and we've got a, a long meeting scheduled tomorrow on the Public Works Building. Hopefully when we come out of there, we'll have a lot of questions answered and very impressed with how everything's moving along, so.
What time's that start? I'm sorry.
Uh, 11:45.
If I have anything for you, Tullis. Sanitation.
I don't have anything. Randy?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Bye. Their staff report. Kelly, you got anything? Leslie?
Nope.
Alrighty. Anyone wishing to address council matters that are not on the agenda tonight, please rise and step forward.
From the large crowd that's attended this evening.
Large crowd. Alright, we'll go to public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on a proposed budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Did we receive any written comments?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make a comment? Nobody jumping to the microphone, I guess. Leslie's prepared a PowerPoint presentation, again, like she has in the last few years, which is kinda very helpful. And we'll go through it. Randy, wanna dim the lights just a second? Yeah, it's good. I can see it now. First, well, page two is the property taxes. As you can see, taxable valuations on the top line, regular is, there's a slight increase of about $3 million over last year's, and TIF is also about a million-dollar increase, and Agland has, has gone up a little bit compared to this year. And you can look across and see, I don't know if this pointer works. First, well, page two is the property taxes. As you can see, taxable valuations on the top line, regular is, there's a slight increase of about three million dollars over last year's, and TIF is also about a million-dollar increase, and ag land has, has gone up a little bit compared to this year. And you can look across and see, I don't know if this pointer works. Oh, yeah. Hey, we're really, you go across the top line and see how taxable valuation has gone up since 2009, 2010. Same thing with the second line, the TIF has continued to rise. Ag land is seeing a decrease because there's a rollback on ag land now. Ag land used to be at about, was very low, and it was equalized here a few years ago, so the legislature gave it a rollback also. And also see, we reduced the TIF taxable valuations for the following years, from 2009, '10 to this year, the TIF value, what we've returned in TIF taxable valuations is thirteen million, twelve, a little over twelve million, a little over fifteen million, a little over twelve million, and not quite ten million for this coming year. What the reduction allows, the regular taxable valuations to increase for the city and other tax-supported entities, which is the school and the county and the college, and releasing that nine point seven eight five seven sixty-six million dollars in TIF valuations results in increasing the revenues in the City General Fund by ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. Next slide is property tax dollars, which of course is the city's largest source of funds for our general government operation. The city is going to receive one million, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars in property tax dollars. That's an increase of forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars from the amount that we budgeted to receive in fiscal year 1213, and that's due mainly to the rollback and the TIF amount requested declined. The state limits, of course, our amount in the general fund levy to eight dollars and ten cents per a thousand dollars of taxable value. Additional levies that we have, which are outside the eight-ten limit, are the liability, property, and self-insurance costs, which is nineteen, just a little over nineteen cents per thousand. FICA's and IFRS, which is just a little over seventy-three cents per thousand, and other employee benefits are seventy-seven cents per thousand, which is, gives a total tax rate for this year of nine dollars and eighty cents. Next slide kind of shows how your property taxes are calculated. You start with the assessed property values, then apply the rollback to get the taxable valuation. So, residential property, the example is, if you had a hundred thousand dollar house, take it times the rollback, which the rollback for this next year is going to be fifty-two point eight, one, one, six percent. So, your taxable value at a hundred thousand dollar house, what you're going to be taxes on is fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Take your taxable value of the fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and twelve, times the levy rate of nine dollars and eighty cents, and divide it by a thousand, and you come up with your property tax for the city of five hundred and eighteen dollars. Now, that's just the city property tax. The, of course, you've got to add in the school and the county and college and Cessor and a couple other smaller ones.
Mayor, can I, can I stop and ask a question here? Leslie, I need some help with the math. Last year, the rollback was fifty point seven five.
There's another slide that'll show that.
Oh, is that coming up in here yet?
Yeah.
Since I was just handed this, I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, sure. There's another slide that'll go to that, Dan.
Just one other comment, and you mentioned this, our tax rate being almost ten dollars a thousand, isn't the total countywide for our town around forty?
Forty-one, forty-one something. That's, that'll show up in the slide here too.
Okay, sorry.
So, the next slide kind of tells you that, it's very hard to see on the, on the screen there, but in Iowa, there's three hundred and twenty-eight cities that have a lower tax rate and six hundred and twelve cities with a higher tax rate for fiscal year 1213. But out of twenty-five cities that are in the twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred population range, only three have lower tax rates and twenty-one are higher, and they range from seven ninety per thousand to twenty-one dollars and a little bit over twenty-two cents per thousand, with an average tax rate of fourteen thousand and thirty-four dollars compared to our levy rate of nine eighty. The next slide will kind of address, you'll see the rollback, where in two thousand two and three, the rollback was fifty-one point sixty-six, seventy-six percent. So, a hundred thousand dollar house, at that time, you were paying fifty-one, taxes on fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Our levy rate at that time was ten dollars and twenty-two cents, which made up, which was your city taxes for that year were five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, a yearly difference compared to what it is now.
That was a yearly difference from the year before.
From the year before.
Ten seventy-two, the tax rate.
The year before was ten seventy-two. And you can go on down for each year, down to where we're at twelve thirteen. As you can see, the rollback went down from oh-two, oh-three to eleven, ten, eleven, and then eleven, twelve, it started climbing back up again, and twelve thirteen, and thirteen, fourteen, to where the rollback the last three years now has been increased. As you can see though, in oh-two, oh-three, your city taxes were five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Figuring, figuring the rollback on this coming year with the levy at nine eighty, you're still only going to pay five hundred and eighteen dollars. So, you're still paying less, paying less this coming year, if this stays, stays as is than you were ten years ago.
Very commendable numbers, by the way.
Next slide is the commercial property, kind of shows you what commercial property has done in the last eleven years. Take a million dollars of assessed value, a few years in there, they actually had a rollback, not, not very big, but not, and the majority of the time, it's been at a hundred percent. So, if you, if you had a building that was worth a million bucks in two thousand two, two thousand three, and you had a ninety-seven point seventy-seven percent rollback, your taxes at the city rate of ten dollars and twenty-two cents per thousand, you paid nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Projected for thirteen, fourteen, you have that same building at a million dollars, now at a hundred percent, and taxable value would be a million dollars at nine eighty, you're paying nine thousand, eight hundred, and you can see it's almost two hundred dollars less than what you're paying ten years ago for commercial and industrial property. Next slide kind of shows property tax history for the city of West Burlington for a thousand dollar assessed valuation, and this is where it shows the total levies, Dan. Fiscal year two thousand two, two thousand three, the school district levy was sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents. City of West Burlington levy was ten dollars and twenty-two cents. The county levy was seven dollars and eighty-one. Community college was a dollar eight, and Cessors is in there also to bring the total levy to thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. And you can see the portion that went to the school in two thousand two, two thousand three is forty-six, a little over, almost forty-six and a half percent, and the city got not quite twenty-nine percent. Going down through those years, you can see the, the schools portion has increased each year, while the city's portion has pretty much decreased each year compared to the levies, where the two thousand twelve, thirteen total levy is forty-one dollars and forty-five cents per thousand. Next slide shows you kind of what the levy, the West City, West Burlington levy rates have done, going back to nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five. At that time, the levy was eleven thirty per thousand, to where going, coming to thirteen, fourteen, you can see over about seven years, it consistently dropped, and it stayed the same for about three, then it went up for a couple, stayed the same for about three, and stayed the same for the last three. The levy's gone from eleven thirty in ninety-four, ninety-five to nine eighty in twelve thirteen. Next slide shows you what the rollback is on, from ninety-four, ninety-five through twelve thirteen, or thirteen, fourteen. Back in ninety-four, ninety-five, we had a rollback of sixty-eight, a little over sixty-eight percent. Ag was paying a hundred percent, commercial was paying a hundred percent, industrial was paying a hundred percent. And over the years, that rollback up until eleven, fiscal years eleven, twelve, steadily declined to where it hit a low of forty, forty-five, actually forty-four point oh-eight percent in oh-eight, oh-nine, and since then, it's seen a slight increase each year, with ag showing a substantial decrease, decrease in the rollback because of the equalization. We don't want them, farmers, to pay anything extra. Residential rollback, well, it's, it should be mentioned that the rollback is tied into the productivity of the ground and not the actual value of the ground. I mean, if they were, if they had to pay the assessed value of four thousand dollars an acre or higher, they'd be screaming.
Fix the state's tax problems, though.
Yeah, it would solve them. The next graph, graph is the residential rollback graph. It also shows you that same thing that was kind of shown on the slide before, where back in ninety-four, ninety-five, we were in sixty-seven percent. The rollback was to oh-eight, oh-nine, you see the continuous drop, and then it's starting to go back up. General funds, the chief operating fund for the city, and this supports operations most identified with the city, such as fire and police. The largest revenue received in a general fund is property taxes, and it also receives all their own income that is not required by law or contractual agreement to be deposited elsewhere, and this can include revenue from hotel, motel tax, local option sales tax, licenses and permits, earnings of investments and permits, and intergovernmental revenues. The city has spent down general fund reserves over the last several years, and the chart below illustrates revenues, less expenditures for each of the year. So, in oh-seven, oh-eight, in order to have a balanced general fund, we spent a hundred and twenty-six thousand, sixty-three dollars out of reserves, and following year, ninety-seven, nine, oh-ten, two thirty-four, ten, eleven, seventy-seven thousand, eleven, twelve, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, and estimated to spend twelve thirteen, two eighty-four, but that number will probably drop by about anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand with the sale of the lots that are projected to be happening over there on the old middle school building, so. And estimate it, just as things are going, we're estimating to see another additional three hundred and forty-two thousand, six twenty-five to be spend down reserves for fiscal thirteen, fourteen. And also estimating that the general fund's going to have a balance of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollars at the end of fiscal thirteen, fourteen, which that could increase by eighty or ninety thousand with the sale of lots, which makes that reserve fund balance be somewhere in between fifteen and probably eighteen percent if those lots are included in that. Road, oops, I better flip that. Road use tax fund comes from vehicle registration fees, motor vehicle fuel taxes, excise tax imposed on rental of automobiles, and a used tax on trailers, and the distribution is based upon the population. We did see a little bit of an increase because we, our census was changed here in the last couple of months ago, to where we received an additional ninety-some dollars for forty-four additional residents, which the amount estimated by the state for fiscal thirteen, fourteen is a distribution rate of ninety-six fifty per capita, but very seldom do they actually, actually give the whole thing. It's somewhere usually in the neighborhood of three to five percent less, and we used the ninety-four dollar for the budget this year. We budgeted to receive two hundred and eighty-four thousand, three, two hundred and thirty-one dollars in the road use taxes, and that amount is two hundred and eighty-three hundred, one hundred and twenty-one dollars is from the per capita portion, and a thousand, one hundred is from the transfer jurisdiction from the four, four oh-six road. Next slide's kind of a pie slide. It kind of tells you where the revenues come from, the sources of them, and as you can tell, the, the big one, sixty percent is taxes, the blue, the dark blue miscellaneous is four percent, our fees and service charges are twenty-six percent, intergovernment is four, is seven percent, use of money and property is one percent, and licensings and permits that we issue is two percent. Kind of breaks down the revenue. Then the next slide is the tax revenue breakdown. We receive sixty percent of that revenue that we receive is from taxes, and the breakdown here shows where the taxes come from. Twenty-one percent is property tax, hotel motel tax is one percent, road use is seven percent, local option sales tax is twelve percent, and TIF is fifty-nine percent. And the next slide with the pie chart, it shows expenditures by function, which is, does not include transfers into those functions. You can tell the largest one, the dark blue is, or lighter of the blues, capital projects, three million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. The next largest one is debt service of one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Then we'll go general government, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, community and economic development, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, culture and recreation, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, public work, six hundred and thirty-four thousand. And the other bigger one is public safety, one million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, sewer, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, water, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, as where the money's going. The payroll, our health insurance costs have increased by just a little over eleven percent in two thousand thirteen. We budgeted an additional fifteen percent increase beginning in January, two thousand fourteen. You don't know what, what they're doing. It could be fifteen, it could be zero, which I doubt, it could be thirty, so stuck fifteen in there. And our employer share of IFRS has also changed. We're, for next year, we're going to go from eight point sixty-seven percent to eight point ninety, ninety-three percent for regular employees, and ten point twenty-seven percent to, is it actually dropping yet?
Yeah, it's dropped a little bit. That gets an actuary review every year, most years ago, so that, once in a while, it'll go down.
And for police and fire, it's actually going to drop from ten twenty-seven to ten fourteen. We budgeted a two percent wage increase for employees, and we've budgeted to expend one point four, five nine, six one, four million dollars for wages for fiscal thirteen, Utilities and water, the water rates, budgeted an increase in five percent. The monthly distribution charge right now is sixteen dollars and forty-three cents, five percent increase will take that to seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents. The first three thousand gallons, that's basically the monthly distribution charge. Three thousand to a million gallons at present time is five dollars and seventy-seven cents. It would go to six dollars and six cents per thousand. The next five hundred thousand gallons is three dollars and seventy cents per thousand. It would go to three eighty-nine a thousand. All water users over one million, five hundred and thousand and one gallon are a dollar ninety-one per, a thousand, it would go to two dollars and one per thousand. Users of three thousand gallons of water would see an increase of eighty-two cents per month, or nine dollars and eighty-four cents per year. Users of five thousand gallons of water would see an increase of a dollar seven per month, or sixteen eighty per year. Sewer garbage and recycling, users of three thousand gallons of water are budgeted to increase of ninety cents a month, or ten dollars and eighty cents per year. Users of five thousand gallons of water are budgeted to see an increase of a dollar fifty per month, or eighteen dollars per year. Sewer rates are budgeted to increase thirty cents per thousand. The rate is budgeted to be four dollars and seven cents per thousand, in addition to a four dollar monthly user fee. Sewer capital project charge of a dollar fifty a month, users are budgeted to remain the same. Garbage rates presently are nine dollars and forty-five cents per month. Rates are budgeted to increase to nine dollars and sixty cents per month, and the present contract expires six thirty thirteen. And I don't think we've heard back from Levine's, have we, on anything yet, Dan? Recycling fees are budgeted to increase from three dollars and fifteen cents to three twenty-five per month, which is a pass-through. Last page shows debt service, city's debt service obligations. We got a two thousand and eleven general obligation bond, which matures in fifteen, sixteen, and it was for streets, storm sewer, and the rescue fire truck. The amount issued was for two million, four hundred thousand for the streets and the storm sewer, and three hundred thousand for the rescue fire vehicle, so it was about two point seven million. The source of the repayment is going to be from tax increment financing and local option sales tax. We pay a principal of four hundred and seventy thousand on the sewer and thirty thousand on the fire truck. So, interest payments, you can add those two together, about forty-three thousand. Paid five hundred dollars in fee. Total payment is five hundred and six thousand plus thirty-six thousand, about five hundred and forty-two thousand. Two thousand... thousand. Uh, two thousand and eleven general obligation bond, which matures in twenty-twenty-one, is for the aerial fire truck. The amount issued was for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Will be paid for, for local option sales tax. We pay a principal of seventy thousand, an interest of seventeen-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty, and five hundred dollar fee, and the amount, so our payment is eighty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-forty. Uh, another two thousand and eleven genera, general obligation bond, maturity of two, uh, thirteen, fourteen, which is the pool bond refinancing, an amount of one million six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, paid for through, uh, tax increment financing. Principal is eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, interest is eight thousand one-hundred-and-fifty, and fees of five hundred, to a total of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. State revolving fund, general obligation bond, as a water project, amount of four-hundred-thousand dollars. The maturity date is, uh, two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight. Amount of issue is four-hundred thousand. Local option sales tax, we use to repay that, principal seventeen thousand, interest nine thousand six-hundred-and-thirty, and fees of eight-hundred-and-three dollars, for a total of twenty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-three. Another state revolving water revenue bond, maturity of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, is for a water project, an amount of three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. The repayment will be through the, the water department, which basically fees. Uh, principal is sixteen thousand, interest eight thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty. Fees are seven-hundred-and-forty dollars for, uh, payment scheduled twenty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty. Um, we have the F and M bank loan for the public works building. Uh, that matures in October, is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Uh, we're gonna roll that into the general obligation bond and use tax increment financing to repay. Principles two-fifty, interest five thousand, total payment two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. And what it doesn't show is the, uh, uh, the public works building, which we haven't put on there yet. It should be in three-point-seven, I believe, in that neighborhood. And that's
So.
The slide presentation.
Very good. So Leslie, then, this
Hit the lights, Randy.
Coming budget year, we're gonna make the last payment on two of those things. Is that correct? The pool bond refinancing and the F and M bank loan?
Yes.
So that'd be like a, that's like a million bucks. And that's how come, Mr. Gifford, then, I know you've talked about next year not declaring as much in TIF debt so that you can help the general fund, and that's one of the ways that's happening, right?
Right.
That's going away.
Trying to keep the TIF debt at a million dollars, that's a, a self-imposed thing to get us, so that three-hundred and whatever thousand we're spending down will be cut by, we'll have a million dollars more to valuation in the general.
Okay.
That won't take care of all that, but it'll take a big chunk out of it.
Take a big chunk of it, yeah.
Leslie, I really appreciate the work you put into this. Us, us non-professional finance directors, this really makes it easy for us to understand some complex numbers. Uh, thank you. Very nice.
The, um, if I had the bonding though for the public works building, what's that gonna do? I mean, that's, that's gonna bump it back up again a little bit.
We've, we've got it figured to structure that loan to try to stay close to a million dollars.
Within the million, okay.
We're gonna do interest only for a few, first few years. Um, the numbers worked. We haven't got, done a final one on it, but the numbers worked when we estimated that, to stay at the million.
Cause then in another two years, that other one drops off. This other five-hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar one drops off in fifteen, sixty.
Yes, the, well, yes.
Okay.
I'm sure by then, though, we'll have something else to spend it on. It usually works.
There's that water tower out there threatening.
Yeah, that's coming too. But there's other ways to pay for that.
Okay. Anyone else, anyone else wishing to make comment in the public hearing? We'll close the public hearing. I am number one. Under new business is consider resolution accepting the budget as presented for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
Mayor, I'm, I'm not at all certain how to proceed on this. Do I make a motion and then we discuss it? I, I wanna make a change in the budget. So do I make a motion with that change and then we discuss it and then vote on it?
I suppose. That's what you wanna do.
Well, everything's in order, but I'd like to re, I'd like to reduce that property, uh, tax down to nine-seventy-five. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I second it, Dan.
Okay, emotional support, a discussion.
Most of the, most of the times that we come here on Wednesdays, we're, we're just trying to use our common sense and, and go with what the department heads tell us. We go months at a time with nothing but five-zero votes, cause, you know, it's, it's pretty, uh, it's pretty cut and dry stuff. Once in a while, an issue comes before us that we disagree on. When I left to come up here tonight, my wife, uh, asked what we were gonna do, and I said, I'm not certain. And she gave me that same line, that she has twenty-eight years being married to the same person, she's always telling me that I'm often wrong, but I'm never uncertain. But this, this issue of the, of the property tax, I, I don't know what that correct number is, uh, but I know ten years ago, it was at that nine-seventy-five mark for a couple, three years, that, as far as I can tell, is as low as it ever was. Uh, and I think it's an admirable goal to try to get us back there. Um, I don't know how much the citizens of West Burlington are paying attention. There's nobody here tonight. But I, I will feel better if we make an attempt to tell the citizens that we're trying. Just sitting here doing the math on my own taxes, they're, they're, because, just, just because of the, of the rollback, they're going up forty-one dollars and forty-five cents this year. Uh, the fees that we just went over, uh, the garbage, the sewer, and all of that is, is, is just continuing to add to the cost of living in the city of West Burlington. Over the last nineteen years, as Leslie's PowerPoint shows, the, the good people running the departments, I won't give credit to the city councilmen nearly as much as I will to the people running the departments, they, they, it, they have allowed the city council to lower property tax rates ten times, keep them the same eight times, and only raise them once. That's a testament to good people doing good work, and they're to be congratulated for that. Um, I know we civilians sitting up here with the opportunity to vote on this issue, we can only take from our personal experiences and try to, uh, bring them to the, to the chambers here, but I, I know that if Brent and I get to the end of the month and we still got a hundred bucks in our grocery budget, we're gonna buy a couple of nice filets and a bottle of wine and have a good, good dinner on that last Saturday night of the, of the month. But if we don't have that hundred bucks, we're going with that baked macaroni and cheese. I gotta think that the city, that any government is gonna operate under that same set of guidelines. If the money's there, we're gonna find a way to spend it. If it's not there, it's not there. Um, if things come along that we absolutely have to have, I'm fully confident that, as, as City Administrator Gifford just said about the water tower, there's always ways. There's, there's always ways. I really wanna do this nickel, if, nothing else, it's just a statement. Um, five thousand dollars is what it amounts to, I believe, and that isn't a lot in the big scheme of things. So I, I'm, I'm certain that that's what I wanna do. A month ago, I didn't feel that way. Two weeks ago, I felt the other way. But here we are tonight. This is the time when we, when we're deciding, so I'm, I'm, uh, I'm making that motion and I'm gonna vote that way.
That's your prerogative.
Yep.
My prerogative is to veto it, which will cost the city an additional thirty thousand dollars. I'll be very upfront with you. If this doesn't pass on a five-o vote, I'll plan on vetoing it. Cause I don't think, uh, you're not helping the citizens at all. Cause you're not, you're, you're, what you're doing is your sixty percent of our taxable valuation comes from commercial and industrial. Only forty percent comes from residential. And that sixty percent pays the majority of the taxes in this town. So you're not really helping the residential. You're giving the commercial and industrial a big break. And they're using our resources all the time.
Two things you just mentioned there, Mayor, that are, are brand-new information to me, that thirty thousand, what's that?
It's thirty thousand. If I veto this budget, this budget will not go to the state certified, which will means we will only collect what we've collected this year.
Okay, so that
Not, well, Dan, I appreciate what you did, and, uh, and that's why I second it. And I know that even previous time, that I always think that we should give back to the citizens. We always give raises and everything else to everybody else and keep spinning, which we all know that the government likes to do, is just spend or find out how we can lose money or spend money. But, uh, I appreciate it, and I think citizens would appreciate it. So, thank you, Dan.
Well, but that suggests that we're being wasteful with people's money, and I don't think that any of us have ever wanted to be wasteful with anyone's money. I think that everything that we try to do, we try to think through thoroughly and make sure that it's an appropriate expenditure. We're not just sitting up here saying, oh, well, we have this extra money, let's go spend it. We don't do that. And I don't agree with rolling it back because I think that we're going to, we don't know what the economy is doing lately. We've had so many ups and downs with the economy over these last few years that if we do another rollback, that we may be setting ourselves up for in another couple of years having to do an increase. And I really do not want to have to go to people and say, we're gonna increase your taxes now.
At the rate we continue to spend our reserves, you're not gonna have any reserves left these days. And then you will be going to the taxpayers for substantial increases.
And we have went to them before with that twenty-five cent increase, largely due because the, the rollback dropped so dramatically that we felt we needed to collect more tax money. In this case, the rollback has dramatically increased, but, uh, we're very, taking back very little of that, actually.
But you're still spending an additional X amount of dollars and the two and the three-hundred-thousand dollars projected, which, if that was a levy, was a three-dollar levy, that would have to be on the top of this nine-eighty to come up with a balanced budget.
Yeah, and you're correct.
And that's not being fiscally responsible to continue to spend down, to spend down, to spend down, to where you don't have anything left. I mean, is every one of you that are wanting to do this, are you spending your savings accounts down to zero?
Are we not still in and up in the, uh, acceptable range given to us by the state or not?
Well, there is no really acceptable range, right? Some people say it's fifteen percent. Some people say it's twenty-five percent. Well, with the levy staying at nine-eighty, yeah, we'll be at fifteen percent. But just, I mean, just to figure it out, I sat down and figured out my taxes this afternoon. If you really wanna make it neutral, you should be dropping the levy forty cents.
You're right.
Uh-huh. Not, not a nickel. So, I mean, really.
That's what I, matter of fact, I memebled, Mr. Gifford will tell you. I memebled him that today, cause I found he, I hadn't put those numbers to pencil until today, and I memebled it to, to Dan. I said, am I right here? This seems crazy. But yeah, the, the actual homeowner, not the businesses, obviously, but the actual homeowner is gonna see an increase like we raised the tax levy forty cents a thousand, which, you know, that was shocking to me. I, I didn't realize that that rollback made that much difference. But it does.
But look at it also.
Right or wrong, I, I'm just saying that's what happened.
They're still paying less. The average homeowner is still paying less this projected year than what he was ten years ago.
Yep.
I mean, you talked about fees increasing and this increasing and that increasing. The other part of that is our fuel and our inputs are increasing, not just wages. I know everybody likes to throw out that government wages increase, but there's others, there's other things that are inputs that we have no control over that increase our expenses, that our, our prices to do the same business we did last year increase by a certain percentage every year as well. So, there's always gonna be some in, increase just to continue offering the same level of service that we did the year before, even without the wages. The wages is a big part of it. That's all, any business's biggest expenses, always wages, but.
You're also, the issue of reclassification of some apartment buildings also.
I can tell you for certain, one of them has been reclassified, which is going to lose about nine-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars in, in, uh, property taxes.
The other two.
The other two could be, which would give you a total loss of thirty thousand in property taxes, loss in property taxes. If the apartments reclassify themselves, may, become co-ops, which is they're allowed to do under state code, they'll be taxed at residential rates. Those three big apartment buildings that we have in town amounts to thirty thousand eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars in loss of, uh, taxes after, if that happens.
And we'll know that when that happens?
Well, I found out Tuesday that one of them already did.
Applied, or?
Uh, I think they already did. That's what I was told, that they did.
I don't know, I don't, you, you probably wouldn't notice it, cause it'll show up in your, uh, as just a lower assess, uh, taxable value.
And, and my thought, I guess, also was that with taxes being paid in arrears, we would be one or two years out in seeing that actual reduction, correct?
No, that would happen right away.
Would. But you pay your taxes in arrears, a, a whole year in arrears. So I'm just saying, eh, this year, this year, they're paying taxes on last year's rates.
Yeah, but it would show up in September.
Okay.
So the property taxes that we collect or that were sent to us from the auditor come in September and March, and that would already show up in September.
Yeah, if it's gonna show up in September, it's already built into our, it's already built into our, uh,
Our numbers.
Our numbers that we have here.
Yeah.
Because it'd be in the, it'd be in the taxable value that we got from the county.
Could be.
If it's already done, it, but who knows?
If not done, it's out a whole nother year.
And I don't know.